Welcome to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will father what you have in heaven, deliver our God, because once again that we humbly come before your throne of grace to say thank you. We thank you for all of your many blessings you've bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. Deliver our God, we ask that you continue to bless our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, and all that department here is on tonight as we gather together to make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything we do, we pray we be carefully give your name to glory, your name to honor, and your name to praise. Let's say Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you everybody for being here. I know we'll have two out, possibly three, first looks right now. Anyway, glad to have you here. I have a motion approved immediately. Motion. Second. I oppose. Motion approved immediately from October 9th, according to schedule. Motion. I oppose. Run down on this for a week. Let me go ahead and announce a prayer, which is the Thursday, first Thursday in December, no, second Thursday.
November 30th.
I'm sorry.
November 30th.
It's not even in December. Alright, so the prayer is November the 30th, I think at 4:30. 4:30, okay, alright. You know, I'll be looking for a day when I can park myself beside the office and watch the prayer. I mean, in 17 straight.
Keep them rolling.
18 straight, actually. But anyway, y'all put that down. While among Christians, I'll look, our other council members know, but we are working on a Christmas tree for Main Street, and it came in last week. One that we're gonna be able to use every year. They ran a test run, Burke's crew called me up at the shop the other day, had to send one piece back for reorder top. What we're gonna do is put that out where the fountain is across from First Bank, right there. Betsy will fix that whole block up and decorate it some, we're gonna have some activities the evening when the Polar Express comes back through town, which is about 6 o'clock. Plan on having some light refreshments, maybe some caroling there, or choir, or some singers, just to get out and have our first annual Christmas tree lighting. Betsy, you really need to help us get that word out. Hopefully a start of something annual. I think it'll really enhance downtown. It's a 20-foot tree, real nice. So y'all put that on your calendar, that is December 2nd.
December 2nd.
6 o'clock. And of course, the time this is ringing, we got the holiday goodness this Saturday at the Wellness Center with the Chili Cook-Off, which benefits the Dillon County Humane Society. So y'all come out there for that, buy the tickets for Chili, if nothing else, and look around the vendors. I think they have close to 60 vendors. They're a big deal all day long.
60 people trying to win them.
No, not 60 Chili Cook-Off people.
60, no, I'm sorry, you're right, 60 vendors out there just other stuff.
Yeah.
I think we probably got three or four.
Chili Cook-Off?
Yeah.
No, right now, we've got...
10 that's paid.
Okay. We have a meeting Thursday night, so we're...
We pay?
Yeah. We've got 25 teams that have said they would do that.
About that is...
Now whether we get all 25, we don't know, but...
That's ahead of a turnout, because I know at one time, a couple of weeks ago at Rotary, I think they had two or three, but I'm glad to get it. So come on out this Saturday at the Wellness Center, I think it's 9 to 4.
We don't know anything about Chili, but we're gonna cook some.
There are a few others that don't either.
Our group will do anything.
While there also, I don't know the date of this, I'll get more to it. We applied with the Chamber of Commerce, and I had to write a letter of support. The Smithsonian on tour is gonna make a stop in Dillon. It's gonna have their exhibit for quite a long time. So it's gonna be an education for children, the schools. I look forward to it. You'll hear more about that later, but I found out last week, we were awarded one of the cities for that. I got my mail last week, I thought I'd pass it along. I used it at my office, Duke Power has, in the cities doing, energy grants for lighting. I thought it was a kind of a farce at first, they pretty much pay 80% of your cost to redo your lighting in your business. It's a big deal. It's everything it said it was gonna be, so I'll pass that along for anybody that needs that, or like to look into it. It is four weeks.
And you can go on their website, Duke Energy's website, and get that information. I had somebody stop by last week, ask me about that also.
We have finished, the time's run out on the Upfit Grants. I think we had eight applied. I went right down to the wire, might have had one, maybe two max, with a couple of days ago, and had six or seven show up the last day. We will, I think Glenn's gonna mention this a little bit in his comments, about a committee or council, so I'll have to have a special meeting to choose the recipients of the grant. So we'll know about that. I discussed hotels some time ago, not hotels, motels, I've been talking about them a long time, hotels. Benny's crew did condemn a motel last month, that old Holiday Inn one.
Super sale.
We said...
Where is that?
The last one out going to the left, on the left out of Dillon, other side of the Wiener King, remember where the Wiener King used to be?
No, no, it was gone one too far. Go under the interstate, it's the first one on the left, as you go under the interstate heading out. Right beside the fireworks, jazz.
Alright, how did we go about building that?
There was some structural damages, rotten boards, things of that nature that were spotted by my inspector, and there were some other issues there, I think it was some plumbing and electrical issues, some fire codes, there's some fire codes issues that was there as well. So we was able to condemn it based upon those violations on them. I talked to a contractor, I think it was Thursday of last week, general contractor, he's in the process of getting permits to repair under violations that are standing right now. So I don't know how long it will stay on the condemnation list. We pointed out to him, the contractor that is, the violations, he says he can repair them, and so we're waiting for him to sign a contract and provide the plans to us.
While among condemnations, we also condemn, I'm not clear about it, but I know we condemn some of the buildings on Hampton, the side of Fanning Dock, right there at Ken's. Car break-ins, y'all keep locking your cars, they hit my neighborhood again the other night. What they're doing now, we've got them on video, from what I heard, they're dropping them off out of a vehicle. Now they wise up, they're wearing masks, so it's kinda hard to pinpoint them on camera.
But just with that, everyone that we've had for years and years and years, excuse me, due to people not locking the doors.
It messed with mine, when I'm locked, got the other one.
They probably tried.
Yeah, they tried. But in this case, lots of them. They hit a bunch of vehicles and houses that night, that was last week. Within a four-block radius, I know the people that got hit.
Are they doing damage, or just...
Well, they damaged mine.
They just hope if there's unlocked the opening, and whatever they see, they pick up and go with it?
It's getting, I mean, it's dangerous enough, but if you outside and you see a masked man, I mean, it's really scared. Something's gonna happen here, don't they?
Yeah, one of them's gonna get shot.
Yes.
That's a little happy.
I think someone raffled in my husband's car, we forgot to lock it.
Lock that door.
And just looked, they were just looking, they didn't take anything.
Somebody's gonna get shot, victim will be, the criminal will be the victim.
The last week, two new restaurants went to brand opening at Little Caesar's, it's real good, they've been busy. Look forward to the other restaurant cookout. So they're kinda popping out there on wrath, if I hear some more news, I'm not gonna say it very well there. We'll go from there, Glenn, that's all I have.
Well, since you brought up the Upfit Grants, we'll start with that first. We did have, I think, eight total?
Yes.
That were submitted on, yeah, November 2nd. Benny and I have gone over on, they will now be turned over to the Board of Architectural Review, who meets first of December?
Yes, first Monday.
First Monday in December. Those folks will meet with applicants and make sure that they qualify, or the criteria that needs to be done on those buildings meet the bar of Architectural Review qualifications. If they meet their review, or their qualifications, then those applications will then be sent to council to determine who gets what, as far as dollar amounts. I think, as the mayor pointed out, you probably need to meet twice in December, your regular meeting, and then a special meeting, because I think you need more than five, 10 minutes to determine who's gonna get any money, especially if there's six applicants that meet the bar's qualifications. But I will leave that entirely up to you. We'll have that information in your packet at our next council meeting, we'll talk about it at our next council meeting, and then you can decide whether or not you want to have an additional council meeting to determine who's gonna get that money. Because it is saying, how they gonna spend it, what they're gonna do, what it looks like today, and what it should look like at the end of the process.
We don't have anything to do with the PSY grant?
No, the PSY grant, you know, once it goes through the Board of Architectural Review, and they meet, you know, the paint schemes, or whatever, signage size, once they approve that, then Benny and I'll handle that, which, y'all just deal strictly with the Upfit Grants. But you should have that information in your packet at our next meeting, and then we'll make a decision whether or not you wanna meet again, but the quicker we make that decision, the quicker these folks can get to work, so we can have it completed by June 30th of 18, so we can reimburse them their portion of the money before the end of our year. Last month, we talked about stormwater fee proposal. I talked to two different community cities that have put it in place. One has just pulled a number out of a hat to charge residential properties, and then another number to charge commercial properties. Personally, I don't know if that's the best way to go, and when I say that, why should a small mom and pop store who takes up half an acre of land, pay the same thing that a Walmart pays, as far as the stormwater fee, because they have more asphalt and larger footprint, so they should pay more.
Would they put in the lakes and things like that?
Yeah.
Does that cut off the...
Well, that, you still get that, as one told me, and that's something that, that's the reason they went to an engineering firm to take that into consideration, but you still get that flow eventually. So I met with an engineering firm a week or so ago, just to get some ideas and some information of what they would do, and they would come in, at this particular engineering firm, would come in, look at all the properties in the city, and all residential properties would be a flat fee, and it could be $2 a month, or it could be $4 a month. Commercial properties would vary. Your small mom and pop locations, that's less than half an acre, might be $10 a month. Your Walmarts, things of that nature, might be $150 a month. It just depends on their footprint and what's on in that area. I've got a meeting scheduled with another engineering firm, who has also done some of these things, just to get some idea from them, what the cost would be for them to do their study. The first one came up with about $15,000 to $20,000. I'm not sure we wanted to swallow that, but at the same time, do we wanna charge just a flat fee for everybody to be the same? If we did, and I threw out a number before, if we did residential for $3, and we did all commercial property $4 a month, we're looking at $130,000 roughly, on a month, on an annual average, what we would collect in stormwater?
How much?
$130,000. The vast majority of that being residential. Now that would, that's an average annual revenue, but it would vary from month to month, because it's based on people who have water service with us. So if we have a vacant piece of land out, not quite sure how we're gonna charge that land. We can't charge it on the water bill, because there's not a water meter there or sewer type of...
Well, the land, it probably would have concrete on it.
Probably does, but you still, they still take, as the engineers, they still have a footprint there, and some of it may be runoff, some of it may not.
Somebody needs the land, why don't you put it on the taxes?
Well, that would be another way of doing it. For those, for a piece of property, a house that's vacant, that's been vacant for, you know, six months, that's revenue that we would not get if it's vacant, so how are we gonna charge? And it could be we do some of those on property taxes. But I'm gonna meet with another firm here, first of December, get some ideas from those folks, and then hopefully bring one of those back to y'all in January to discuss the process, see if you wanna go further with it, or do you just wanna pull a number and say we're gonna assess residential this and commercial this.
Sure, I want 25.
Understand.
Get an idea of that.
Understand.
We can't look at somebody else who does this and say, we use their...
Well, and one of them was, one of them is City of Durham. They just pulled out...
Summer sales?
They just pulled out a number and said, we're gonna charge residential $3, commercial $5. And is that appropriate? I don't know. Is that fair? I don't know.
I see a foreign, something.
Yeah. They didn't spend the money with an engineering firm.
Like, imitate someone who spends the money?
Yeah. That's what I'd like to do, yes. But I am meeting with another firm first of December, to get some information from those folks. November 2nd was the deadline for applications for our new position Downtown Coordinator, had about 14 land to apply. I'm interviewing about seven, started the interview process today. I think I finish up interviewing this week, and then I'll pick two or three to come back for a second interview. But I'd like to have some of those folks off your committee to be involved in that second round, maybe two with three. The Downtown Committee, so if you can give me some names, because they need to be a part of it, to get an idea of what we wanna do, and have this person meet some of these folks. So, second rounds, I'm hoping to start those the week after Thanksgiving. Two of the four interviewed today were top notch, pretty good. One was from Atlantic Washington, one was Lakeview. We had some good ones today, look forward to some that we have tomorrow, and then on Wednesday. And then, last but not least, I have with us tonight Mr. Terry Marsh, who I think I brought up to you last month, talking about East Main Street and taking out the island on East Main, there in front of Council on Aging. Terry has experience with DOT being, he's retired resident engineer that we had here in Dillon. So I spoke with Terry, he's talked with some of the folks with DOT, in your packet. I submitted to you some drawings that actually Terry did, that shows some red lines, so I'm gonna introduce Terry, and he can kinda go over this and give you some idea of what he's thinking, and what DOT likes. You got one?
I have one.
Mr. Marsh, you ready?
I'm ready.
Now remember, you gotta stand up here so Betsy can get you on camera.
I think the computer. I'm just, it's a drawing you got, or this picture. I've shown the left turn and your right turn. Presently, you got about 90 foot of right turn space, that's about five corners, about five spaces. If we extended that on down to the second driveway where the white car's at, that will increase to 230 foot, which would be 14 spaces. So you'd increase by nine spaces there. The right, the left-hand turn, right now is about 100 feet, six spaces. If you took out the island in the center of the road, and put a painted island, you'd probably, you'd get about 180 feet, which would be 11 spaces. But now with that painted island, folks coming up the road would be able to drive over it. It wouldn't be a barrier in the road, it'd just be painted there, and they could scoot on by the other. That's, taking those two islands out, and Glenn's already talked with the lady at Council on Aging, and she has no problem with losing the spaces that she has, but we take out the small one on the right-hand side. And the parallel parking space down between the, at the parking lot, that would have to come out. And this whole section of road would have to be resurfaced. But you don't go up to the loops for the traffic signal, that way you don't have to worry with redoing the signals. And then back in front of, I think it was Young World, all this, where it meets, and all along the curbing has to be ground out, two inches, because you can't tie the asphalt right down to the curbing, and it's zero, it just, it won't work, it won't stay there. So we got some estimates. Burke went and talked with Industrial Painting, and they gave him two prices. One was for taking the curbing and shrubs out, and putting floable field back in. And while I mentioned the floable field, I talked with Benji today, they have changed their mind on floable field, since there's water and sewer lines under there, they wanna go back with four inches of concrete and two inches of binder asphalt. So, but anyhow, he gave the price of $12,000 to do just that, and then the price of resurfacing from those marks that they have on there would be $60,000, a total of $72,000. I got, meet you with the Highway Department, we always, we have a program in the computer, you can estimate what something's gonna cost, and you have that in your packet, and what we've done was, this is based on an average of what contractors in this area are paying right now, or requesting for payment, and that comes up to $40,000 to do the same thing. And mind you, this is just an estimate, because, and one thing I found out to Glenn, it has mobilization, $490, where you're not gonna get a contract to move in here for $490. But then, I talked with Earl Gleason, with the County Transportation Committee. They receive money from the state, and have to spend 25% of that, or a percentage, back on state roads. Earl said that right now, all their money is tied up with Zimra and Port, but he would be glad to get with Glenn and talk with him. Next year, they could add this on to CTC program, and that would pay for the grinding and resurfacing, and the pavement markings back to go in. So that would save the city some money, if you could wait till 2019.
Bonds and insurance is $15,000 on a $72,000 job?
That was the only thing that I could increase. And I told him when I asked, give me something that I could increase, because I wanted that price to get higher. What it first came up with was way too low. I didn't wanna come in here, then, if you look at one of the industrial paintings, got there much higher than this one. So this is just an estimate, and I tried to get it as high as I could get it, because I didn't wanna tell you it'd cost you $20,000, and we do an estimate, and somebody bids on it, and it's $35,000.
Forget about that piece of paper.
Yeah, that's just a...
That's just a state program that they kinda estimate off of. That's not a quote from any...
Yeah, that doesn't come from anybody. It's out of the computer.
I'd like to be getting a quote or an estimate from an engineer on this.
See, the state takes these, and when, with the CTC, they'll work up the roads that they wanna pay for the state, and it's worked up just like this, and then they put it out to bid. Sometimes it's a whole lot higher, sometimes it's less, but this is just an estimate. It doesn't, it's nothing that a contractor does, and prices vary from day to day. Now you can, the options you got is, you know, you can go ahead and have the city to take it out now, and pay somebody to do it, or you can take it out now and wait, just like I talked with Benji today, he said if we, if the city took it out now, and put the four inches of concrete, and the two inches of binder, and the pavement markings back in, and those pavement markings, if you put down paint, it's gonna last about four months, and then you have to repaint it. Or you can put thermal plastic down, and it'll stay till whenever you wanna do it. But you can do it that way, and wait on CTC, and let them pay for it, or that's entirely up to the city.
CTC, that C funds?
That's the, yes, sir, that's C funds.
How likely is that?
Oh, I think they will.
When I talked with Earl, he was enthusiastic about it, he said he'd be glad to help the city out.
We're talking a year and a half away before they've got funds to do anything.
What they've done is, what they've got this year, they've already allocated, that will be paid next year. And he said he would love to get with Glenn, and work up something next year to put on for the following year to be done, because they've got to put a percentage back on state roads. This is a state road. This helps them, they have a lot of people coming to them wanting their road paved, and if they can do a project like this, that helps more people, that's what we have to try. Take the resource of the road and help 12 families, that's good, there's 12 families needed, but if they can help this many folks, that's what they're...
$20,000 different years.
Yes, sir.
Now, make sure I understand, if we just have to start it in January, taking out these, this island, and then the two on each end, or across the street, and put in the concrete, hire somebody to put in the concrete and the binding asphalt, and whether it's temporary or permanent line, it really doesn't matter. DOT's okay for us to wait a year and a half to do more resurfacing?
Right, all we have, all you have to do would be renew your permit. Permit's good for a year, and at the end of that year, most of the time, you can say, well, I'd like to renew it for a year, or I'd like to renew it for six months, and it doesn't cost anything for the permit.
What's the majority of the cost, resurfacing?
Yeah. Well, and the grinding.
And that's C funds only handling resurfacing?
Well, it'll handle the whole thing.
Well...
It'll handle the whole thing, because once they have a project, that's the whole thing.
Yeah, it has to be right for the resurfacing. But it won't do anything with the demolition of the islands?
No.
But you wouldn't wanna do that, be, be called out?
Well, we think we can do it in pieces.
Well, if we can get the city to do the part they wanna do, or if you wanna pay somebody to do it, and then just put a temporary fix over the islands that come out, and they traffic run over, gotta work, and they're good with that, and then a year and a half from now, resurface the whole thing.
It would look like...
Or wait a while.
It would look like a patchwork.
It would look like a patchwork. Now you can wait till next winter, next fall, and the city can do their work, and then CTC come in that summer and pay, you're less time of having a big patch in the middle of your street than if you do it right now.
The better, the less time, the better.
Yes, sir. And you don't want too much traffic on it, well, you want enough traffic on it, because you got water lines and sewer lines under there, you wanna make sure, if it's gonna hold, that you know that before they resurface it.
Not a bad idea to do a piece of resurfacing.
You don't, you don't wanna fix it, and then all of a sudden, a water line break, because it wasn't fixed right.
Jerry, we appreciate it, thanks for all your work.
And we're also gonna get another contractor to give us a cost on it right now. And we're also gonna get another contractor to give us a cost on it right now, just so we'll have an idea. But depending on how far we go along with, you know, those prices will change if they're six to six months to twelve months old. It would change.
What does council think of holding off and getting C funds to handle the?
To me, it sounds like not only is it a good idea from a money standpoint, but it's a good idea from a standpoint of seeing that the six inches of concrete's, you know, gonna hold your pipes, getting to do asphalt now and speeding it up.
Absolutely. Because then you're gonna have another patch job.
That's right. I like, I like pretty big.
If you're gonna spend that kind of money, then it should be pretty accurate. And everybody understand on the picture, when we're talking about asphalt, and it's kinda hard to see, but right under the words only, that's where the asphalt, new asphalt would begin.
Basically from Hope's.
Well, no, basically from Stephanie's building, there on Fourth Avenue, there should be a line. Yeah. The asphalt would basically start here and go to here. That way we're just. No, that's, that's Stephanie's location there, Council on Aging here. That way we're not in the traffic loop, but going to the I-4 talks this too. And then you're, but it's going from curve to curve.
Okay.
This island.
It's seventy foot wide and, I think, two hundred and thirty feet.
Two fifteen, I believe.
Two fifteen, yes. It won't be the complete whole block.
It wouldn't be the whole block.
Yeah. All right, I think that one has. That's all I have at this time, Mayor.
Anything anybody want to bring to attention now? unfinished business, we have none. New business, Resolution 617, this is in your packet, the South Carolina Municipal Risk Financing Fund Deductible Resolution, which basically moving the deductible up, not much. I think it saves about twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand annually in our premium cost, yes, sir. By increasing our deductible by fifteen hundred bucks.
I think that's probably worth it. That I've read on paper, what y'all think. You'll do what y'all, y'all wants, talk to y'all.
No, we think it's a good idea.
Yeah, Johnny said it.
We think it's a good idea. And mind you, whatever events we may have, you just never know, another hurricane or that type thing, it may not be as cheap to do that, but.
Well, so it's a per cause deductible?
This is a per cost deductible, I guess. Up to five?
Up to five if we had to make it.
But we think this is something we should do.
Yes, sir. All right, you heard it.
I made the motion.
All right. Council member reports, Austin, this Manny.
I don't have anything to do.
How are we doing on the budget as far as percent of revenues? Are we on target, just kinda looking at December? Are we gonna be able to do anything in December for employees? Well, we, y'all voted and we put in the budget to do something in December.
Okay.
You already did that.
Yes, that's, yeah, we did that during the budget process, so y'all discussed on
I don't have anything, it's a short meeting. I want to thank everybody for coming. Anything else you need to council, it's off.
Make the motion.
That is good.